Page is one through eight. Anyone have any corrections?
I do on page five, paragraph three, um, third sentence, last word. It was written as thoroughfare.
Yeah.
Whereas what I said was thorough, comma, fare, F A R, F A I R. So I wasn't talking about a road. That's all I have.
Thank you for that correction.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction.
Second?
There's a motion and a second on the minutes with corrections. All in, any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes approved. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number four, the appointments of the vice chair and chairperson.
Do you want me to, do you want me to read the agenda item first before you guys take any action?
Might as well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. City code section two dash seventy-three requires the appointment of a chair and a vice chair to serve for a one-year term. Under section two dash seventy-three, the chairperson shall be chosen from the committee or commission membership annually to serve a one-year, provided however that if no chairperson shall be elected who has not completed at least one year of membership. Also, the vice chair is to be appointed and act as the chairperson in the event the individual who is chair is absent from a meeting. The request from staff is that the commission appoint a chair and a vice chair to serve a one-year term ending January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
I'm, I'm going to propose that we move that off till next meeting when Sheri and Randy are here. Sheri was our vice chairperson last year. Normally she would be the chairperson. But I, I just propose that we put that off till next month.
Motion to table the, the appointment of the chair till our next meeting when we're a little fuller up here. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is tabled to our next monthly meeting at the fourth Tuesday in March. And moving on to agenda item five, commission interviews. Aaron, please.
Yes. On January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, the term of Commissioner Karen Creppis expired. Although the planning commission recommended the reappointment of Commissioner Creppis to an additional term, the city council did not approve the reappointment. This has then created a open position on the planning commission to be filled. City staff have advertised the opening and received, scratch, that should be three resumes. The resumes and interview questions are attached for your review. The recommendation is that you guys hold a interview panel of the applicants and recommend to the city council to fill the vacant seat for the term to expire January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. In your packet are the resumes and potential cover letters. There are also a set of questions for each one of the candidates. I did talk to each one of them today in person on the telephone and reminded them of tonight's meeting as well as the interview period. So those three are listed. You can take them in whichever order you'd like and conduct the interviews and give us a recommendation.
Take care. At this time, I'll just go down the line as you have them in here. I believe you said they were in order of applicant.
Yes, the order that they came in is the order that they ended up on your agenda. Doesn't mean you have to take them in that order, but that's how they were placed on the agenda.
Great. So then at this time, I think it would be only fair to the candidates, and I think as we've done in the past, ask the other applicants to step out while we ask the questions to give everyone the opportunity to answer in their own ways.
Agree, yes.
Well, with that, if, if Ram or Joe are in attendance, if you want to step up, thank you. And at this time, we'll call Wanda McLaren up to the podium. Questions, as Aaron said, you guys should have a question sheet in your packet so we can write down any responses for each of the candidates. Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, Wanda.
Good evening, Tanner, Sharon, Glenn, Gabriel.
Good to see you.
All right, um, if it works for everyone, just, uh, don't mind, I'll start with one and we'll just keep going down and just keep going in order as the candidates come up for it, if that works.
Good.
Great.
We'll just go ahead and start with a series of questions. First and foremost, why are you interested in becoming a planning commission member for East Bethel?
I originally joined the city coun, well, joined the city commissions as an E D A member. When we started working on the comprehensive plan, I moved to this committee. And I was on this committee almost three years. I chaired it for two years. As all of you know, I ran for reelection after I got appointed to city council and I lost. So I would very much like to stay involved in the city. I think the city is still a diamond in the rough. I still think there's a lot that can be done, a lot that can be accomplished. There are some problems. There are some things that are not right. But I think this commission is where everything starts. It starts with what we agree to. It starts with the ordinance changes. It starts with the precedents as we set. We make decisions on things that don't fit, you know, square pegs and round holes. And we make those decisions which set precedence. And I would very much like to be a part of that again.
Wanda, what strengths and abilities would you bring to the planning commission?
Um, I have sat on the planning commission for a number of years, chaired it for a number of years. I have the familiarity of that. I also was privileged to sit on city council for a year. That gave me a great deal of background knowledge on how the city runs, what happens. I come with critical thinking skills. I can think on my feet. I am able to look at the big picture rather than just this narrow scope of what we have. I also know, most of you, short of Gabriel, I've not had that privilege. He actually, oh, you replaced after me, but the rest of you, I know your strengths and weaknesses. You know my strengths and weaknesses. And I think it works out to be a very, very, very good team.
Wanda, what issues are you most interested in pursuing or promoting as a commission member?
I think we really need to look at how we're going to keep rural, rural and the Highway sixty-five corridor moving forward. We really need to look at how we bring new businesses into town. We've got to be able to keep our taxes down, our levies down, and residential does. But in order to take some of the pain off our residential people, I think we need to look at the right businesses in the right places along our corridor. We have a gem. Unfortunately, um, with us being north of Ham Lake and south of Isani, we're kind of getting squeezed in where it's becoming, let's get proactive and let's decide what we want instead of these people coming to us and saying, okay, I want to build on this corner and fitting all the criteria. At that point, our hands are tied. Thank you, Glenn.
I feel like you touched on this a bit in your previous answer here, but if you even want to go into more detail, what is your vision for the Highway sixty-five corridor?
The Highway sixty-five corridor is a unique area. You've got water and sewer on the north end in Whispering Aspens. You've got water and sewer on the south end. You've got the stubs coming across Viking Boulevard. It is going to take a lot of decisions to make it be the right fit. We don't need any more storage units. We don't need any more Dollar Generals. Yes, they've served their purpose. What we put along that corridor represents the city. We don't need the ugly car lot south of Route sixty-five. And yes, Aaron, I'm sorry, but I know you're working on it. But I mean, it, we really have to look at what's coming in and maybe search for what we want there as opposed to them coming to us and fitting all the criteria and us having our hands tied.
Thank you.
Just two more questions. Are there any local issues that could place you in a conflict of interest situation? For example, a situation in which you'd be financially benefiting by a planning commission action or on a specific topic?
No, sir.
Thank you.
So before we end the interview, do you have any questions for us or is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing I'd like to add. I would be honored to be back and join this commission. We did a very, we did a lot of very good work in the years that I was on it. It was extraordinarily challenging. Those were the years I chaired, were the years of the Zoom meetings and it was difficult and, but we managed to do a lot of good work. And I would be honored to be back on this commission.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, commission. I have a lion's zone banquet tonight, so I am going to leave you and I will hopefully hear from you. And it goes to city council on the thirteenth, right?
That's correct.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Aaron. At this time, I don't believe Ram was able to make it tonight. If he does make it in time, we'll be more than happy to question him. But yeah, Joe, if you please step to the podium. I was just saying that one of the other candidates, Ram, was not able to, to make it tonight, so. But if he does make it in time, we'll certainly give him the opportunity to answer questions as well.
Sure.
So with that said, same, same approach we just had with Wanda, we've got six questions. I'll start and we'll just kind of keep going around the line here and answer them as best you can. Why are you interested in becoming a commission member for East Bethel?
Sure. Well, good evening, Planning Commission. It's nice to meet you. Hopefully our interaction here is better than on social. I think it will be. The reason that I'm applying for the planning commission is because I have a vision for East Bethel that combines economic growth and development with preserving our rural aspect. I don't think it's one or the other. I think we can have a solid mix. A lot of the discussion I hear is how do we do this on sixty-five and do this in the rural areas? And I think that might not be the right way to approach it. How do we make sure that our businesses match our city and how do we make sure that our businesses actually serve the workforce that we have? Like right now, our, our city, the average commute is forty minutes for the average commuter. That means that we're missing some things as far as economic development goes. Like how do we bring those businesses to our city? How do we make sure that people don't have to commute that far? How do we make it so that our city is relevant for, for our workforce? And so the reason that I'm here is because I do feel like my vision is slightly different. I don't think that the vision is completely wrong, but I feel like my perspective is a little bit different in that I can be a, maybe a diverse voice here for the planning commission.
What strengths and abilities would you bring to the planning commission?
Some of the strengths that I know that I have are data collection and analysis. In my professional career, I've been an analyst, uh, working with computers and databases, working on G I S, so mapping software, figuring out trends. So I'll be a, I'd be a good addition for, for bringing in numbers and analysis for the group. Believe it or not, I, I, I do try to find moderation in a lot of the things that I do. And often I, I, I find that when there is difficulty, it's usually just due to miscommunication. I'm aware of that. What was the other part of the question? I'm sorry.
It was just, what strengths and abilities would you bring to the planning commission?
Right, and I guess another thing that's probably important to say is I'm very dedicated to studying the city. I spend a lot of time every week just looking at the maps, trying to figure out ways that we can improve, interacting with the public on social media, uh, trying to get people just involved. I think some of the city council meetings, we've, we've seen a lot more people show up. And I, I think it's important to have civic engagement. And just engaging with people in a social aspect is, is very important. I, I think that it would probably be better if I was collaborating with the planning commission on what was going on there to make sure that everybody was aware. Fortunately, I've been a single voice all by myself because there, you know, we don't collaborate and it doesn't seem like we know each other that well. But I feel like if I was on the planning commission, there would be a lot more collaboration, probably be a lot more moderation in viewpoints. And there'd be a real solid vision and message going out to our community so people knew what to expect.
What issues are you most interested in pursuing or promoting as a commission member?
So the thing that really got me involved in politics in East Bethel was the water treatment facility down on the south end of the, the city. It's a huge infrastructure investment. I feel like it was sold in, you know, that we were going to have development. And I, and I'm worried right now with the economy and the interest rates that are, that are raising that the development's not going to come for a long time. So I want to see ways that we can reduce the impact of that infrastructure on the rest of our community. I, I feel like maybe adding high-density townhomes and apartments might not be the, the best approach. But I do know that the businesses down in Soderville are screaming for a connection. And right now, the Met Council seems to be the holdup. They're asking for Ham Lake to change all the rules and abide by the Met Council's planning, all their plan. And from what I know about the Ham Lakers is they're not interested in that. And so I feel like as a planning commission, we should be figuring out ways to make sure that those businesses can connect while reducing any impact for the rest of Ham Lake. How do we get those connections in a way that makes it so that it's sustainable for our community but also reduce the, the taxes that residents on the other side of town have to pay for? My house is never going to connect to that. And I, I, you know, it's, I feel like it's unfair for other residents who are never going to connect to have to pay for it. You know, it's tax equity. I, I tried to start a discussion about some of the zoning in the water district. You know, we have land investment companies that came in after that development occurred and bought up large portions of land. They knew that the land was undervalued at the time. And my feeling is that now that they have the land, they can financially, they can take out loans on their property and basically get tax-free loans without having to pay taxes. And I'm not going to call out any specific land tracts, but, you know, I feel like adjusting the zoning to make it more appropriate for the improved development that's going on there might be something that we should examine, you know, a seventeen million dollar property in prime real estate probably shouldn't be taxed at forty-eight hundred dollars a year. It's, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me that that, that's occurring. I, I feel like maybe our assessor is maybe missing some opportunities to, to set tax rates correct. But here's another example. Quick, the Quick Trip property is two point six acres and it recently sold for three, one point three million dollars. A property across the street has thirty-five acres and it's assessed for nine hundred thousand dollars. These are very similar properties. The tax rates don't seem to match. Now, when you, when you compare the property values, even solid by the theater, those businesses are, are paying about nine hundred thousand dollars for two acres. So, and that's just the property value. I feel like maybe reviewing what the actual land values are and making it more appropriate and maybe updating it for what it's actually, what they're actually worth will probably bring in better revenue and make tax equity better in our city.
I got this question last time and I kind of like it, but you, you spoke a little bit on this in your first response. But what is your vision for the Highway sixty-five corridor specifically?
Well, my personal vision would be to see it skinnied up a little bit. Everyone's asking for rural preservation, or at least a lot of people that I'm talking to. Having a mile on each side of sixty-five be the development corridor seems a little wide to me. I, I, I think that focusing, focusing development on the corners, you know, the three major corners that we have would probably be better. And zoning those correctly so that development can occur would be useful. Like right now, since the zoning is basically the same all the way up, I feel like this is preventing development from happening where we need it, you know? If, if we were to zone appropriately and maybe add some risk to these properties, it would motivate these developers to actually put a road in, try and sell some of the property. But then having, having land a mile off of the highway, like it's, it doesn't seem very well planned. I, I know from speaking to other, I guess, historical members of planning and zoning commission, we once had a, a city plan, like a, like a city center plan that was abandoned at one time. Like, we paid a lot of money to, to make sure like we would have a community spot that we could all envision as, you know, be proud of, where we could all come together where our businesses would be. And for some reason that was scuttled. You know, we built out water infrastructure to try to draw that in. There was road designs and ideas for what types of businesses we're going to try and bring in. And, you know, it got laughed at and then it's, you know, called, it was called a cartoon and then it was abandoned. You know, I, I feel like a lot of these developers want to do something around here. And I feel like they're being restricted because their land values are way too high. And it's, it's better for them not to, to develop at this point. I mean, if I was, if I was in their position, I would say if I, if I'm not going to pay taxes on this, this property, I'm going to take a loan out on it and I'm going to go invest someplace else where I can make more money. And I, it's not, it's not corruption. It's not bad dealing or anything like that. It's, it's a financial choice. You know, when some of these, these people come in and they have plans to buy these properties, I can guarantee you as soon as they talk to their financial advisors, they know that's, that's not something you want to do. It's, it, you won't make more money by doing this. If they have a ten million dollar property that's assessed at nine hundred thousand, they can go to bank and get that equity out. And they can use that money for anything else. So that's money that we invested. That's value that we created as a city and that we're paying for. And by not taxing those properties appropriately, we're not going to see the development, in my opinion.
Are there any local issues that would place you in a conflict of interest situation, i.e. a situation in which you financially benefit by a planning commission action or a specific topic?
Well, so I own no property. I don't work for any businesses that are going to, to enrich me here. In regard to what I want to do, I want to enrich everybody in the city. I want to make the properties more valuable, but not increase their taxes based on it. I think some other things we can do are, you know, improvement projects. How do we improve the ditches? You know, once, once these ditches are, are there, they were built by the Army Corps of Engineers. They haven't been repaired in years. So now there's mosquito problems. There's drainage problems. If we were to have a plan to go out and fix these ditches, we can repair a lot of these, these neighborhoods that are having drainage issues. Another issue that I see is, you know, how do we help Coon Lake to improve? Like that's, that's another thing that I don't hear a lot of from the city. There's a lot of people that live on that lake and there's a lot of traffic and now that Anoka's going to get involved and it's going to become regional. It's going to, it's the highest traffic lake in the county. Yet, like what are we doing to make sure that it's not getting all mucky or filling it in? You know, the city is in a good spot to work with Ham Lake and Columbus. Like how do we get a dredge in there and start cleaning out the muck? How do we make sure the weeds are, are improved? You know, I'm, I'm a member of C L I A, Clean Lake Improvement Association. And there's houses that are in some, some canals that exist and they haven't been improved and they have no idea how to get it. So these canals, these lakefront properties are getting filled in. They're, they have no more access to lakes. And I feel like the city could get involved in those and, and improve that. And so while I'm not going to benefit financially, this is going to improve, this is going to benefit a lot of our community members financially.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we end the interview, do you have any questions for us or is there anything that you'd like to add?
Well, just addressing some of the social media aspects and discussion that's been on there. I have been trying to start a discussion and seldom turns out, seldom turns out to be a disagreement. It's, it's, it's often turns into infighting and I don't know how to approach this when I'm trying to, like I have been trying to get more community members involved and active and aware of what's going on. And it always seems to devolve into like interpersonal conflict. But I do have, you know, a love for the city. You know, when I was in the military, I always dreamed of moving to East Bethel. When I was a young boy growing up in Blaine, this is where I wanted to live. This is where I grew up. This is where my dad took me boating and, and hunting. And, you know, I have a lot of friends in this community now, like all, everyone that grew up in Blaine seems to have moved up to East Bethel. And so, you know, my perspective is how do we preserve the things that we value? A lot of people moved up here to be in a rural area. And I think, you know, I want to make sure that we can preserve that. I want to, I want to make sure that we can improve like economic development and create jobs that are relevant. But at the same time, I want, I want to make sure that's balanced and that's really my motivation for coming here tonight.
Great. Thank you for your time and your application.
Thank you, Joe.
And I also have to leave. I have a commitment.
So did the previous member as well. Thank you. And Aaron, we haven't heard anything else from Ram, correct?
I haven't.
Also don't see anyone waiting. Huh? I don't see anyone waiting. Okay, great. Just wanted to give him the opportunity if he was able to make it.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if we should postpone the decision to give him more time to show up before our meeting concludes?
So you're going to move, you want to move the voting to the, toward the end of the meeting?
Right.
If he has the opportunity?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Aaron, did, did he give indication that he'd be able to make it or just that he wouldn't?
When I, when I talked to him on the phone this morning, the conversation, I left it fairly open with him that we would be meeting at seven. He described a conflict with childcare and was unsure whether he could make it or not, so. I got no definite answer, one way or the other, from him as to attendance or not, non-attendance, so.
Okay. I'm comfortable moving it to, yeah, after item seven if everyone else is in agreeance. So I don't think we need a motion for that, so we'll just, yep. Give everyone an opportunity to review it. We'll vote at the end. With that being postponed, Aaron, we'll go ahead and move on to item six A, a public hearing for an interim use permit at two three nine one one Johnson Street Northeast for Innovations Plus LLC, Paula Moon Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Community Development Department received an application from two three nine one one Johnson Street, Paula Moon Pruitt on January twelfth. We are requesting that the planning commission hold a public hearing to consider a recommendation for an interim use permit to allow a home occupation for the operation of an apparel and promotion items business continue. The applicant is Paula Moon Pruitt. She is the owner of Innovations Plus LLC. Innovations Plus LLC is a small, family-owned, full-service, custom-order promotional products and decorated apparel business. Innovations Plus LLC specializes in advertising, promotional items, embroidery, custom T-shirts, and provides service to numerous customers and communities throughout the Twin Cities area. Their business hours of operation are Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM, which are within the identified hours of the city noise ordinance. Eighty-five percent of the business generated through, is, are generated through online sales. Traffic generated is less than Traffic generated is less than typical of a retail storefront. There is adequate off-street parking for anticipated customer traffic in the existing driveway on the property. There is no anticipated effects on groundwater, surface water, or air quality as none of the processes used in the business use water, generate wastewater for disposal, or create air pollutants. Waste and refuse generated from the business is minimal as boxes received in shipment are reused for outgoing distribution of outgoing merchandise and apparel. Other refuse generated is no more than the regular weekly household waste disposal or bi-weekly recycling can handle. The location at two-three-nine-one-one Johnson Street is a residence. However, it is located in a light industrial zone of the city. Light manufacturing and retail sales are identified as permitted uses in the city's light industrial zone. This zone designation is consistent with our twenty forty comprehensive plan and will not require rezoning or the creation, a further, create a, a further non-conforming use should this IUP be approved. Staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to the City Council for an IUP to allow the home occupation of operating an apparel and promotional items business with the conditions set forth in the resolution as attachment number one.
Thank you. Seeing as this is a public hearing at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up. Anybody who wishes to speak on the matter for the public hearing, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to know, I did take one phone call from a neighbor who was extremely supportive of Ms. Pruitt. And he was surprised to learn that they did not already have a business license based on the operation that they were performing in, in the district, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you wanna have a discussion? Anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
Please, I, I have a question.
Absolutely.
So why would an IUP even be needed then if it, if it's in the light industrial?
Because this is designated as a residence and not a light industrial use. So it has to be declared as one or the other. It can't be both in the zoning district. So we're gonna need a permission to, to move, to allow for one or the other in this particular zone.
That was my question.
You nailed it. I've been getting a motion if there...
I'll make a motion to approve the business interim use permit for this property and business owner, and with the staff recommendations.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I am curious if, once this gets approved, does something change? Joe had mentioned a lot of, uh, tax differences between residents and businesses. Is this gonna change how they're taxed?
My understanding is they'll be taxed based on the zone that's currently assigned to their zone.
Sure.
We're not changing zoning, we're just allowing for a conditional use beyond what its primary use is.
Okay, got it.
Now granted, she may generate sales tax from her operation, which would go towards the county sales tax and/or city if there would happen to be a city sales tax based on what she generates as a business.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. This'll go before City Council, is it the thirteenth?
Thank you, Monday the thirteenth.
And with that, similar but different, we will move on to item six B, which is a variance request for general regulations for detached accessory structure placement near the front lot line of a primary structure at two-nine-three-one-one Johnson Street Northeast for Paula Moon Pruitt.
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. This one will be a little more complicated and a little longer. Bear with me. The same day and time, we received a request, application for a variance for the placement or continued placement of a detached accessory structure nearer the front lot line than the primary structure at two-nine-three-one-one Johnson Street. This property is located in a light industrial zone and is located within the Wargo Pond subdivision. The property owner is requesting a variance to keep a detached accessory structure closer to the street than her primary residence. Zoning Appendix A, General Regulations Section fourteen-two-point-F states that no accessory building or detached private garage shall be located nearer the front lot line than the principal building, except when the lot is three acres or greater. And the existing principal building is located a minimum of two hundred feet from the front lot line. The accessory building or detached private garage may be located closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling, but not closer than fifty percent of the principal's dwelling setback. This property is three point nine-three acres with the primary structure setback approximately a hundred and forty-nine point three-three feet from the front property line. This request does not meet the criteria set forth to allow the structure to be placed closer to the road, so a variance would be required for placement of a detached accessory structure in front of the primary residence. I have highlighted for you in the past, I will do it again, the considerations for a variance, which is a three-factor practical test. The first test of reasonable this means that the landowner would likely use the property in a way practical, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to use whatsoever without the variance. So for example, if the, if the applicant, the variance application is for a building too close to a lot line or does not meet the required setback, the focus first factor is whether the request to place the building is reasonable. In this case, the property owner is requesting a variance to keep the detached accessory structure in which she can continue to operate a home occupation, light manufactured retail business, which is a permitted use in our light industrial zone. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of a particular piece of property that is the land and not the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. When considering the variance for a building to encroach or intrude into a setback, the focus of this factor is whether there is anything physical unique about the piece of property, such as sloping, topography, or other natural features like wetlands or trees. In this case, the property is partially located in the Menard Lake Shoreland overlay that has specific setback requirements. The property is in a regular, irregular-shaped lot in which three-fourths of the lot are in the Wargo Pond or in a designated drainage or utility easement. These features limit the buildable area available to the rear and side yard for any new construction. The subsurface sewage treatment system and well are located in the side yard opposite of the Wargo Pond and the drainage and utility easement, preventing access to the rear yard for placement of an accessory structure. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surroundings. For example, when thinking about a variance for an encroachment into a setback, the focus is how particular, how a particular building would look closer to a lot line and if that fits in the character of the neighborhood. In this case, standing tree growth between the primary residence and the front lot line would screen it from view of the public roadway and therefore not alter essential character of the neighborhood. This accessory structure again is permitted, excuse me, accessory uses permitted in the light industrial zone include uses commonly associated with a permit as determined by the Planning Commission and approved by the City Council. The recommendation from city staff is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the City Council for a variance for the placement of a detached accessory structure nearer the front lot line than the primary structure with the conditions identified in Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen.
Thank you again, Aaron. Again, since there's a public hearing on this, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Again, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we wanna have any discussion or is there a motion?
Can I just get some clarification? This is to keep the existing structure that's already on site there, or are they adding to this structure?
So this is the complication with the variance in this particular scenario. The request of the applicant is to keep the existing accessory structure in its location in front of the residence. So for further explanation, I've created a map that will sort of explain the complications with this particular lot. And I wanna bring this up on our aerial map so you can get an actual view of what the property looks like. You can see the existing detached accessory structure and its location.
Do we know how long it's been in place?
The original information about this structure that I can find is prior to twenty-twenty-one. I didn't work for the city at the time, but this information was on the desk when I inherited the job
Sure.
to, to start in with, trying to achieve compliance from the owner of the parcel to get to meet code. So prior to twenty-twenty-one for sure. The other complication with this lot, so you can see that the Wargo Pond is taking up this portion of the yard. This portion of the yard is a drainage easement for stormwater runoff from the street. So this detached accessory structure is sandwiched between a wetland and stormwater runoff. If I switch over to the map that I've mapped of the property, you can see I've placed the well in its location with some distances, the septic system and the drain field. So that's cutting off the backyard from any potential placement because we, we have an ordinance that says you can't drive over the top of or park on a septic system. The blue line here highlights the buildable area as defined in the plat prior to construction. So the house was placed nearly on the easement line to maximize the available portion of property that was left. The red box or rectangle is the existing location of the detached accessory structure, which you can see is well in front of the, front of the residence. The areas in green are the areas that I've identified as potential areas that would be acceptable for placement should a variance be granted for the building to be allowed in front of the primary residence. I will bring up the lot survey for you to see the defined area of easement that was in the plat. The dashed line around here is the allowable buildable area based on designation in the plat. So this accessory structure is technically currently placed, it's not technically, it is placed in a drainage and utility easement in its existing location. City code does not prohibit building in a drainage and utility easement. We do allow fences in drainage and utility easements. We do allow driveways to cross drainage and utility easements. However, we do let the folks know of those fences and/or driveways that if the city should need to do any utility work and/or cleaning or alteration of the easement, the city's not responsible financially for replacing the fence or the driveway. Historically, I don't know that we have any past permissions to allow detached accessory structures in drainage and utility easements.
What about any denied applications? Has this come up before?
Again, I've only been in the office since July. I did not do any homework on prior denials for this sort of thing. My assumption would be that, and I hope, from a professional standpoint, that anyone in the position prior to me would have steered any resident away from building or placement in an easement prior to it actually being placed. And in this case, as I alluded to, there were no permits applied for prior to placement. And that's probably why it ended up where it ended up is because it would have been screened through the zoning process prior to placement and would have never been allowed in that location in the first place based on current practice.
I could add that being on P and Z for twenty-five years, I don't recall any incident of a variance request for that in particular.
Thank you, Glenn.
So there was no permit ever for the building?
We have no permit at that address for placement of a, and/or building of a detached accessory structure and/or shed. The, the permits exist for the construction of the residence, the driveway and the septic system, but no other permits have ever been issued.
And they would be required to pull a permit initially to build that structure?
Yes, it's bigger than two hundred square feet. Our ordinance states that anything over two hundred square feet requires a, a building permit. This, in this particular instance, this detached accessory structure, from my own measurement, is eleven by forty or eleven by forty-four based on the overhang. That's considerably larger than two hundred square feet. Now granted, this property, based on its size and our zoning code, would be allowed multiple detached accessory structures to a certain extent of square footage. I'm certainly interested and can look that up for you based on the zoning code as to what overall size would be allowed for accessory structures. However, this particular one, anything over two hundred square feet, would require a building permit and have to comply with building code. So that is another hurdle that the applicant will need to handle, but that's not part of the variance process. So the request was to make a recommendation for placement in front of the primary residence, not necessarily allowing it to remain in its existing location. That's something that community development is willing to work with the applicant and/or resident to make it come into compliance. And that is a condition in the drafted resolution that they, if that building is to remain, if the variance is approved, that it has to meet zoning code.
Do we know how long this property owner's lived here?
I do not. I can certainly check that out if you'd like.
I'm just trying to get an idea of, like I said, how long this building's been up and I could understand if it predated them.
I, I do have some historical photographic data about to two thousand eight, we could take a look. So here in two thousand eight, it did not exist. Two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen. There's twenty twenty and there's twenty twenty-two. So that's very, fairly consistent with the timeline of the information that I had when I started here. So twenty twenty-one somewhere in there.
This is a tough one.
Yeah.
Mister, I've been on the commission for twenty-five years. What has been done in past things like this?
I can't recall seeing something quite like this. And that, part of the consideration to me is, it's a very, like, if, if we, let's say we were to accept the request as stated and the building remains there, this is not something I would think of as setting a precedent because it has so many unique factors to it and the property and the restrictions. So I wouldn't wanna use that as a reason to deny as far as the fear of setting a precedent. Cause I, also I like to evaluate each thing on its own merits and not be locked into decision-making because of things that aren't, aren't relevant to the specifics of this one.
So if I may respond to that, we do have zoning regulations regarding wetland setbacks. If I bring up, for instance, the wetland designation for Wargo Pond and or drainage and utility easement. I'm not confident that matches our 25-foot setback for wetland. As a matter of fact, I could draw in really quickly. We can find out from here to here, let's say nine feet, if that's accurate. To a some degree, that is accurate. So there are zoning regulations that also need to be applied for wetland. So as I said before we started this agenda item, this is a very complicated matter. And that's why I drafted the resolution so that you guys didn't have to worry about the particular zoning regulations when it comes to the setbacks for wetland and or shoreline overlay or drainage and utility easement. It's simply that you look at approval, whether A, it can be in front of the house or can't be in front of the house is realistically what the variance tonight is all about.
And then any relocation would fall onto?
We would do that through the building permit process and or zoning regulations to facilitate the relocation of this so that it matches zoning code. So that's how the the resolution is spelled out for you to alleviate you from having to make a difficult decision when it comes to leaving it or not leaving it.
Thank you in advance of that. So again, and to speak plainly, if if we're ignoring the asking for permission versus forgiveness scenario that we do have before us, if this had been someone who came before us prior to, would we have approved the variance to allow allow it to be in front of us or behind or to be in front of the front of the house or not, really is is the first question. And then we can address that. Again, I agree with Glenn, this is an extremely unique property. There's then with Aaron that it is a very complex situation. So just trying to break it down and again, Don, I appreciate you bringing up precedent thing because that is always a concern with stuff like this that, you know, all of a sudden we allow it once. Does it allow it everywhere and then it's run rampant? And, you know, that's part of why we have rules and ordinances and regulations to begin with. So I guess to me, that's really where the discussion starts is if is this something that we would have allowed?
If this were before us and I was looking at all these factors, I would say the thing should probably go on the other side of the driveway and rotate at 90 degrees, which would not involve another concern, which would be cutting down a lot of trees to try and make it fit. But there is, looks like some level ground or at least not overrun with trees just to the south of the driveway. And if it were parallel or parallel to that asphalt and slightly closer to the house, that seems like a more ideal.
Until we realize where the well is located, which is already in front of the house.
How far does that extend in that to that area?
So the other map, the, excuse me here, the this map shows you the zoning setback from the right away. So we'll have to be behind this blue line here.
Right.
And you have to be 50 feet from the well or?
Three feet from the well.
Three feet. So isn't that doable with a rotation like that or or not?
Is this blue line here commissioners is the 10-foot side yard setback? So yes, conceivably, the building could even sit right here and still make code. The building could sit in, I can't rotate this, but in an orientation that the short end would be parallel to the asphalt and the long end come down into the yard. There are a number of configurations that could potentially work.
But you're you're saying that this is not something that we have to concern ourselves with so much, the the exact location.
No, it's whether it's in front of.
In front of the primary residence or not, that's what you're looking at here tonight. Not the existing location, although that's what the applicant applied for. I made it very clear that that probably isn't going to happen and I did not write the resolution again. So you guys have to make that decision. I'm willing to from my office, work with the landowner to get this thing to comply with zoning code. So you guys don't have to.
Would their intention be to move the existing building rather than rebuild something in another location?
The applicant has indicated that she's not interested in moving the building. I did have a nu- number of conversations with her about my proposed locations to move. And she was insisting that we bring the application through in this manner. So I know there's a lot to digest.
But like you said, we're breaking it down to the point of would would it be?
I simplified it so that you guys didn't have a gray decision to have to make.
Yes. So again, with your comments, though, we could feasibly see there may be places in front of the house where a structure may be usable.
Yes, i- inside the blue lines, the blue polygon, if you will, there are green areas which could potentially meet the setback requirements if you allow for placement in front of the primary residence by variance.
And the reason I asked about moving the building is because if there's nothing magical about the dimensions of it, it could same square footage could be different, more toward a square shape, which would be easier to fit in some of these options.
I I don't want to speak for the applicant. She did purchase the building. The building is not on a permanent foundation. The building could be picked up and moved. Whether that be by manual means or tornado, it certainly could.
Painstakingly.
Be moved.
But but again, it goes beyond the scope of what we have in front of us at the moment, so.
In front of the primary residence or not is the.
Yeah, that was really helpful, thank you. I have no problem with it being in front of the house.
And from what I see, if we say no, it can be, there's nowhere else to put it. So it's got to go at that point, so.
And that's the the three tests of reasonableness are, one of them is there is likely no other alternative other than in front of the primary residence. Based on configuration and construction and the location of the septic system along with the drain field, I don't see any way to put it in the backyard unless they would abandon their septic system and change its location. However, that won't work with Wargo Pond being in the backyard to meet the setbacks for septic system. So it's it's a very complex scenario. The only other solution would be that we hook it up to septic and water, which isn't an option at this point, so.
Pretty sure we just had one of these, again, speaking of precedent. And we did just recently have another front yard, you know, accessory structure based on, again, a similar unique property. So again, if if we were talking along those lines and again, if this, if I'm taking out the asking forgiveness versus permission piece of it, I could conceivably see that, you know, we've we've approved similar in unique situations, which is why we have the variance request.
Yeah, so the the violation was, the applicant was notified of the violation. And in terms of rectifying this situation, she has come in and made application to make things right, so.
And that's obviously where we want to see things move, and those are the cases.
Yes.
I guess that's my four cents on it.
I'd be happy to make a motion, although I'm kind of hogging the motions today, but to to allow for the accessory building to be in front, located in front of the building.
As stated in resolution.
Somewhere.
If you want to read it.
If you just, if you would just approve the resolution for recommendation to the city council, that should cover whatever you want to say regarding that, I would assume.
All right, so I I will rec, I will make a motion for a variance for the placement of the detached accessory structure nearer to the front lot line than the primary structure with conditions as written in resolution 2023 dash 14.
One second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. Variance approved or motion approved for variance request?
So that will move to the city council on March 13th as well?
13th as well, okay, I didn't know, thank you for that.
You bet.
You're gonna have a busy meeting on the 13th. All right, moving on to item 7A, a conditional use permit amendment, site expansion for Washee Commercial Finishes at 21335 Aberdeen Street Northeast.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The community development department has received an application that for a conditional use amendment, site expansion at Washee Commercial Finishes 21335 Aberdeen. The applicant is requesting an amendment to his existing CUP to expand his business known as Washee Commercial Finishes Incorporated. The business has been in operation since 1986 and has been operating out of its current East Bethel location since 2004. In 2004, the existing zoning in the neighborhood center allowed for a construction, trade and service business with limited outdoor storage as a conditional use permit. Therefore, a conditional use permit was approved and allowed for the business to operate in its for its current location. For your review is the original conditional use permit and the meeting minutes from the council meeting when it was approved. This business has outgrown and the indoors and the indoor and outdoor space and would like to remain in the city of East Bethel. The owner has purchased a 1.03 acre parcel to the east of the site and was approved on September 12th of 2022 under resolution 202250 to build a, excuse me, 7,200 square foot building with fenced area for storage. The storage area will be used for parking of work vehicles, including trailers. All products will be stored with inside the building walls. Mister Washee has applied to amend the CUP further to construct a 1,400 square foot unconditioned addition for more storage to his existing building. An amendment to an original CUP is required for the following reasons. The business is a legal nonconforming use. This means the business is legal because the conditional use permit was previously approved. However, current city code does not allow for this type of business in the B2 Central Business District. Therefore, it is nonconforming. City council has the authority to change legal nonconforming uses into it or, excuse me, city council has the authority to determine if a legal nonconforming use can be expanded. When a conditional use permit expands its footprint by city code, an amendment of the CUP is required. Next steps would be if a conditional use permit is approved, a site plan would not be required in this case because the proposed expansion is less than 25% of the existing building's footprint. And appendix A, section 412, site plan approval provides information to us that any addition less than 25% does not require a public hearing or a site plan approval process. A formal building application will need to be submitted and reviewed prior to construction. Staff is recommending the planning commission review the conditional use amendment request and make a recommendation to the city council with the conditions set forth in resolution 2023 dash 16. There are a number of attachments, I'd be happy to answer any questions. A public hearing is not required.
Thank you for the reminder of that. Do we want to have discussion before a motion or I would entertain a motion and open for discussion at that point?
I'll make a motion to open discussion on the conditional use permit amendment and site expansion for Washee Commercial Finishes.
I'll second your motion for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved, all right, discussion on the item. Anyone have questions, concerns, comments?
This did come before us a couple of months back, didn't it?
September.
Yeah, and that's when he bought the property to the east and the plan was to turn it into more parking. Is that correct?
I think it was expand the building and parking, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Because again, from what I'm recalling, I remember the the neighbor on the other side of Sims on the corner there had concerns and then was alleviated based on the conversation that was.
Yeah, because of the fencing that would be up or whatever.
Yep.
So this map shows on the left is the existing building where the addition will happen. The lot on the right is the lot that was purchased, which has a future 7,200 square foot storage facility coming.
That's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
In the meantime, the applicant has applied to add on to gain some storage to the existing building, which adds to the footprint, which leads to the amendment of the conditional use permit. I do have building plans if you are interested in taking a look at what the addition to the building, what territory it would cover. You guys orienting these for printing is hectic.
It's all in driving itself.
Yes. Okay, so the existing building is here that you see, this would be the addition.
And that's jutting off the east there?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
See if I have a different view for you. Be coming out this backside. So if we scroll back up to the overview there. It would be this section of the building right here.
Which is less than 25 feet or percent?
Less than 25% of the existing footprint of the building, therefore doesn't require site plan approval, which triggers the public hearing, which triggers all of that.
It does not seem like a big deal to do that to me.
All right.
I I I feel the same, it'd be easy easy accommodation with everything else I've got going on in the future. And again, from what I'm recalling, the neighbor, the member right, she said that, yeah, she had no issues with them prior. She just wanted to get an idea of what was going on to make sure it wasn't going to impact traffic.
Yes, the original resolution, which was included does require that access to the additional lot on the right. You'll see in the next item, a site plan approval for the lot on the right side. Davenport will be the entrance and exit or ingress and egress for the facility on on the right-hand side of the properties that are owned.
Yep.
There won't be anything coming off of Sims.
Correct.
Which was the concern of the citizen at.
Yeah, she didn't want the lights coming at her house.
Correct.
Yep. Good to know, my recall is still working. Any further discussion or is there a motion for approval or denial?
I'll make a motion to send a recommendation to the city council to approve the conditional use permit amendment for in-site expansion for Washee Commercial Finishes with the conditions set forth in resolution 203, I'm sorry, 2023 dash 16.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any, not hearing any opposed? Motion carried also on the 13th, Aaron?
Yes, that agenda's looking pretty thick, but we're gonna push it all on there.
Right. Best of luck to them. All right, moving on, 7B, site plan review for site expansion. Again, for Washee Commercial Finishes at 21335 Aberdeen Street Northeast.
All right, thank you, Chair. The applicant also, at the same time, has applied for a site plan review as was required in resolution 2022 dash 50 for the expansion of the previous amendment. The the applicant was obligated to apply for site plan approval prior to any construction. It's my understanding that at the same time, the addition will be added to the building. They're going to prep the site on the right-hand lot from, if you remember from the map, for. On the right-hand lot from, if you remember from the map, for future construction of the facility. That triggers site plan review because we're working on the lot that was approved by resolution. Uh, so on September twelfth of two thousand twenty-two, under resolution twenty fifty. An expansion of an existing conditional use permit was amended and approved with the following conditions. Prior to construction of the new facility, a site plan review must be approved by the planning commission and the city council. Uh, exterior storage would be limited to commercial vehicles, trailers associated with the principal use. And ingress and egress, as we talked about, should be off Davenport Street. Um, although Mister Washi is not ready to begin construction on the previous approved expansion. He is applying for a smaller addition to the existing building for storage. Additionally, he's requesting to begin site preparation. To include clearing, lot leveling, fencing, ponding, in addition to construction of the driveway entrance off of Davenport. Uh, as previously approved. City staff have reviewed the proposed site plan and support the configuration of this site. All city engineer comments will need to be satisfied prior to, prior to issuance of any building permits. Uh, the city engineers' comments regarding grading and drainage will need to satisfactorily be addressed prior to issuance of a building permits. An easement for grading of the city-owned lot to the north will need to be, um, drafted prior to construction. Um, a landscape plan, um, will be required at the time of application for the building permit of the new facility. Um, and need to meet requirements of city code, requirements for plantings are based on the square footage of the building. So at this time, we won't have a building to be built, so we won't know what planting requirements will be necessary until we get that building permit. Um, the architectural design, the, the future building must meet established building design and architectural standards based on code. Uh, we have some preliminary plans already from when the amendment was approved to show that that likely will meet architectural design. Uh, the building and lot will also need to have a lighting plan, um, which would be required at time of building permit application for the new building. As we'll need to know where and what needs to have lights on what part of the building without knowing the size of the building, we don't know where the lights need to go. But those will need to be, um, applied for at the time of building permit. Uh, staff recommends the planning commission review the site plan and make a recommendation of approval to the city council. With the conditions set forth in the resolution. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And again, no public hearing is needed at this time.
No public hearing necessary. The public hearing was held for resolution twenty twenty-two fifty, this is just a condition of that approval. Thank you.
Yep, clarification. All right, um, I'm gonna go right into a motion or a motion to discussion, one or the other. Anybody'd like to make one or I again?
I can't find the language.
Does anybody, I'll do out the resolution, the resolution is on page five zero. Otherwise, the staff report is on page forty-eight.
So I'll make a motion for the, um. Re- recommendations to city council to approve the resolution, um, two zero two three dash one seven in regard to. The slight, site plan review for, um, Washi Commercial Finishes.
I'll second. Thank you. Uh, any continued discussion on the motion for approval? No? All right, I have nothing either, again, looks, again, makes sense. Um, this time I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution, motion is approved for the resolution to go before city council for approval, also again on March thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, with that said, we have the tabled item of. The candidates, if it's easier since we have all this paper in front of us, or just right at the back and fold it and pass it down and. At most votes or tie.
You, you guys, uh, can do it by secret ballot or you can do it by affirmation, you can do it by motion, you feel free to do however you want. You are the chair, you determine how the elections are done.
Let's go ahead and do secret ballot, just forsaken of it, if you wanna write something down and.
Make it more secret.
You will however have to make a motion then, once you have the tallies.
Yep.
Look at this.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
And do we give it to Aaron or?
I can certainly count them if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah.
And wherever that came from.
Thank you.
Is that yours? You always carry.
I wish, I might have to disappear with it. My wife needs these.
I'll drop you off and get stacks in the office. For company.
This one disappears, it's not.
It's not as good as the headset you get.
Yeah?
You get, well, you had the Viking one last night, now you get.
Yeah, I, this, this is my company, not mine technically.
Where you, where you work.
Yeah.
Fisher, I have four votes for Wanda, uh, candidate number one.
Thank you. So then at this time, you said I need to make the motion?
Someone would need to make a motion for the recommendation to the city council.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend Wanda McClern as a planning and zoning member to the city council. Based on the four zero vote, uh, post-interviews and questions tonight.
I'll second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none. Motion moves forward, also will go before city council on the thirteenth.
Yes, if you would all, um, hand your questionnaires with your written.
Yep.
Uh, responses down to me for collection.
And destruction.
And destruction.
Thank you.
Couldn't read it if you tried.
Yeah, it's okay, uh, it's procedure.
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe we are down to. Council report. Thank you.
I think he left.
Is not here.
He left.
Okay, seems our representative has slept for the evening. So I'll go ahead and move on to an adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Wasn't there other business, I mean, I don't think.